Six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to work. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? There in a second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Next order of business is approval of the minutes of the March 11th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? No, sorry. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes? So move. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. We now move to a period of public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the planning board. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or take any action on items brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments to the board as a whole and not one individual member. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits of three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please identify yourselves so that your statements can be recorded. Any public comment?
Planning Board members, I'm Dave Stumpf, I live at 815 Lindsey Lane in Manio. I'm a member of the Manio Main Street Board, but I'm here as a private citizen. I believe that you should approve the proposed zoning changes to B2 zone. Manio is going to grow, but we need to have controlled growth, which this change does. It would permit the 1718 brewing company to build on a piece of land that is sat vacant for too long. It is very valuable property that has a long history for Manio. It would be a great asset to the town and show that we can have controlled growth that benefits Manio. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Go ahead, John.
Hello, my name is John Robbins, I live at 109 Puddle Lane, Manio. And again, sharing the earlier speaker's comment, I speak out in approval for zoning amendment to allow for the use of the brewery at the former Weeping Radish site. And earlier in speaking with the commissioners, the commissioners' comments, I spoke about a historic overlay district. And I'll just read this real fast for the significance. And it said, in 1986, darn it, hold on one second. But in staying that, about a historic overlay district, here it is. In 1986, Ollie Benowitz founded Weeping Radish Farm Brewery in Manio, North Carolina, marking the state's first microbrewery post-prohibition and beginning North Carolina's modern craft beer movement. In keeping with the tradition of first, first English settlement in the New World, Virginia Dare, the first English-born child in the Americas, and the Wright brothers, first in plight, the town of Manio, to recognize Mr. Benowitz establishes historic brewery district overlay. And I think, again, it was a special place growing up for me. It was a place where Eddie Green and Richard, they had had plays after the Lost Colonies, it was a social gathering place. When it was the brewery, again, it was a vibrant, vibrant place. And I really don't think we need to use uses such as pointing to septic as being something that stops strong development. These days, zoning is beautiful, you can put in anything you want, you can put in impact fees to help you pay for the septic in the future. You can put in pre-treatment facilities, which can, you know, recognize those things. And right now, if you do nothing, and don't allow, which I was just surprised at the commissioners, and they corrected that wrong, but you can put a laundry facility there, more intensive uses, where there's no limit on septic. And the fellow that runs the septic sewer station does a beautiful job, I mean, no violations. But all those bugs and things that are healthy that eat out the microorganisms that, you know, help treat the sewer, you put a laundry mat in there, it kills all those things. And it's just, the thought process that goes in it, I just encourage the town to have better, just thought before, because the easiest thing in life is to tell somebody no. And that's not right when you're trying to grow your town in a manner that grows for the future. With 30 seconds remaining, I just employ you, you know, we may have lost this person, but in the future, and I don't know if we could have or not, but in the future, I would highly encourage you, and all did Josh, this wasn't carried through, but I hope that the town will improve in the future on how they address these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to a period of new business. First item is consideration of a text amendment to create Article 11, the first North Carolina Brewery Overlay District Regulations. And I just want to preface this by saying, this is for no specific application, it just creates a mechanism and establishes requirements if someone wants to apply for a special use permit for craft brewery or craft winery. So, move on to the staff report, and Melissa's not here, so I can read it or you can read it.
May I try to, Josh? At their March 19th, 2025 meeting, the board commissioners directed staff along with the town attorney to prepare a zoning map amendment that creates an overlay district along 64-264 in the vicinity of the Weeping Radish property, which allows for at least a mixed use of craft brewery slash winery and restaurant, and also to prepare a zoning text amendment that allows craft brewery, restaurant, mixed use in the overlay district, that a special use that defines a craft brewery as being limited to producing 3,500 barrels of beer per year, that has a minimum acreage and road frontage along 64-264 for any craft brewery/restaurant use, that provides the user to be responsible for proving, providing, and maintaining sufficient pretreatment for the craft brewery to ensure that the craft brewery, to ensure that the town does not violate NPDES permit, state or federal law. That requires the users to report monthly on the pretreatment program at the user's cost, that allows the town to inspect the pretreatment program at any time, that requires the user to reimburse and identify, or indemnify, the town for any fines or damages caused by the craft brewery affluent, and that requires the user to immediately stop the craft brewery use, that the town does not violate its NPDES permit, state or federal law. Staff along with the town attorney have crafted and attached zoning text amendment for consideration.
Thank you. Could you put up the map of that district? It was clear on what, it's the very last page. Here you go, outlined and red.
Now, that does include property on the west side of 64, Sacramento.
Yes, it does.
And in our prior discussions, I believe we were talking about the other side only, I believe. But it's now been expanded to this side as well.
It's also a lot next to the, Ben was responsible for putting all that together so he can elaborate on that.
Well, I'm not sure, in the prior discussions, I'm not sure, in the prior amendment that came to you, it would have been on the west side, the east side, and all the way down, everywhere in pink would have applied. So it would have been west and east side. So, the, this over, and this is actually, talking about the map amendment is the second item. We can kind of talk about these together, we put one before the other. Normally, you put the map amendment before the text amendment because of the, but because of the weird downzoning provision that's in the General Assembly now, that the General Assembly did, we're putting the text amendment before the map amendment, even though they're going to be adopted at essentially the same time. But the map amendment part of it would add an overlay district where the red lines are on all those properties. And so, any of the uses that are applicable in the text amendment would apply there. All the regulations in the text amendment would apply there. And it would not take away the B2 uses which would underlie that, they would still be there if someone wanted to use the traditional zoning district that is there as well.
Was there any particular reason that was done? Or was it?
The reason was to keep it in the vicinity of where the Weeping Radish property was.
But to create a district and not site-specific.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, spot zoning is not, it's a term that everybody thinks they know what it means, but most people don't. And it ultimately is more complicated than just using one lot. But anytime you use one lot, you got a high potential of a spot zoning problem. The less, the more space geographically you use for a district, the less likely you have risk of any spot zoning. So, you can still deal with it no matter how small it is, if you do it the right way. But in general, that's the, that's why you make districts a little bit bigger, so that it can apply in a bigger area. And that would mean that anybody could, on any of those parcels, if they meet the requirements of the text amendment, assuming it passes, then they could perform it in that overlay district on a parcel. Or combine parcels and, you know, they could put, so Mike could buy all four parcels that are, three parcels that are on the east side and put them together, or buy all three parcels on the west side and put them together and do something. Same as any other space in the B2.
There are parcels in the district that don't meet the lot size requirement with frontage of 64, so that's intended to allow people to buy and merge those lots together for the users to do a recombination if you purchase them all.
Well, it just makes it so it's still a requirement. So, whatever you're going to do, you got to meet the requirements. If you, if you are trying to do it on a parcel that's too small, it won't work.
But if you, a highly improbable possibility?
Stranger things have happened where people have bought large, you know, in other areas who bought large parcels and, or multiple parcels and combined them and done unexpected things on them.
Ben, it might, it would be helpful to me to talk about the process a little bit, the overlay process, rather than what we were attempting to do before. Could you talk about that, how this plays into what we're doing?
That, I understand question. Do we have? This is B2, and then B2 overlay?
Well, it's the first.
Because you have your list of uses of B2.
It's the first North Carolina Brewery Overlay District. And on the official zoning map, it's going to be, it'll be hatched of some, it'll have the pink, but it'll be hatched, and there'll probably be another item in the key. I think this is just for illustrative purposes, you could expand it some if you wanted to. But this is just for illustrative purposes. It's an overlay district, so the B2 is still there as the primary zoning district. And you could put this overlay district in other parts of town as well, it wouldn't make much sense since it's the first North Carolina Brewery Overlay District, and there's no other areas where that is. But that's how overlay districts work, is you could have a B2 that took up as much pink as you see there, and then you could have areas of hatched of some sort of overlay district shape.
First brewery district in the downtown, a fishing district or whatever, that was traditionally done, and whatever overlay districts you say.
I think NAGCIT has a hotel overlay district. I think it has a couple of other overlay districts, if I remember correctly. It's been a while since I've looked at their zoning map. But if you wanted to see an example, looking at their zoning map, I know that they've got, I think at least two.
Can I, I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't realize you had any questions.
The steps then, I think that's what I was talking about as well. What steps are we to take tonight, the commissioners, we recommend to the commissioners, then we have to come back with a special permit again?
Only if somebody applies. If nobody applies for a special use permit, the district is in place.
What are the steps with this type of process?
You've got two things to look at tonight, the text amendment and the map amendment. And you will make a recommendation of either approval or disapproval, and that'll go to the board of commissioners, and then they'll vote to either accept those two things or not, or to change them. If they change them significantly enough, then they'll need to send it back to you. If they change them in very minor, in very minor ways, then they can still vote. If they change them in very minor, in very minor ways, then, then they can still vote on it. Or they can vote on it as it is. If it passes, then it'll be just like any other zoning district with regulations in it. If somebody comes in to apply for a permit under the uses that are allowed, then it would come through the process. And, and the only uses it's allowing are both, are two uses, a mixed use of brewery and restaurant, and a mixed use of winery and restaurant. And so somebody would come in and apply for that mixed use for a special use permit, and it would go through the special use permit process.
Can I have Randy?
Yeah, just, there's six parcels that are going to be so rate, so rated or so changed, which means there are six owners at least listed on the tax rules who are B-two. And if they want to take their property and do a consistent B-two activity there under current rules and ordinances, does this in any way limit their ability to turn the general, was it dollar store into a seven level, or so, you know, whatever, whatever they might want to do?
No.
With, that's legitimate.
This is in addition to the whole B-two uses.
In, in this case, it's, the way it's, the language of it, it's, it's completely in addition to the B-two uses, they're still there, and there's no change in that.
Okay.
Anything that's listed in B-two, you would have to go through the B-two regulations.
Right.
It would just be, it would just be like the overlay district's not there, you just, if somebody wants to do something that's allowed.
The fact is, those particular properties are listed the way they're listed now, doesn't prevent the current owners from continuing current B-two uses.
It doesn't restrict them from anything that they were already entitled to. It gives them all the B-two and an additional two uses.
Now, if this were a standard zoning district, then it would. But that's the whole concept of the overlay district, is you're keeping the, the base district there and all the regulations and uses that are available there, and you're adding some more uses that, that you can do in a smaller subset of the base district. So the B-two, as we said, it's all the pink, so the smaller subsets just is overlay district.
So which part of the approval first?
Looking at the text amendment first. It, it doesn't matter as much for you as it does for the board of commissioners, and probably doesn't technically matter for them, but they probably need to do the text amendment before they do the map amendment.
I've got a question on the text amendment.
Go ahead.
So paragraph four A five, which is in regard.
What page and line might be the use?
I believe it's page thirteen. Yes, their number of pages.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry.
Let me go down and find that. Page six. Set the text. Number four, the mineral scan for pretreatment effluent. Yes.
Yep.
So on, I believe it is number five there. It states that the system will prevent effluent from going into the town's wastewater treatment system. I would like to add to that, it would also prevent it from going into stormwater system and the wetlands.
And so if you want to end up doing, you can do that, you can recommend, you can't actually add it, but you can recommend that the board of commissioners add it.
Okay, I would like to recommend.
And then you would, but the way you would do that is via the vote, so you can tell everybody that's what you want to do, and then when somebody's ready to make a vote, if it's you that makes the vote, you could say, you know, I approve this with the addition of.
Add it to the motion, okay.
Yeah, so that, that's how you'd want to do that.
While we're on that topic, this seems to be oriented for brewery primarily. Was the staff doing any work on regarding a winery, a possible winery?
Yeah, well, we didn't have the whole back, we were a little bit surprised by the winery concept. But the pretreatment applies either way, and what you're putting into the system applies either way, and the proof, so all these requirements are going to apply whether it's a brewery restaurant or a winery restaurant, to the effluent that's coming out of either the brewery or the winery portion of that use. And, so everything's treated the exact same from a pretreatment perspective and from the lot size perspective. The only thing that's different between brewery and winery in terms of the treatment and the ordinance is, you do brewery, breweries deal with barrels of malt beverages, and a craft brewery is defined in, in this text amendment as a brewery which is limited to producing between zero and thirty-five hundred barrels of beer per calendar year. And wineries, wine folks use multiple different things, depending on the bottle, depending on the bottle size of the wine. But essentially what I did was I figured out the equivalent gallons between the beer and the winery, and said the winery could do the same amount of gallons, although it looks like they can do a lot more because they can do forty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-five cases, but that's the same gallons as three, as thirty-five hundred barrels.
So, that was my other question, too. So we don't have anyone from that segment of the craft industry?
And, and we weren't.
That can tell us that this is, I know, we don't have an application.
Well, no, the, the idea was, the plant, sewage treatment plant established those guidelines that they have to meet as far as biochemical oxygen and suspended solvents and all that. If they want to do something different, then they have to hire an independent consultant and come back and show that it will still be okay and not affect the operation of the plant.
Well, that, but also the number of cases. To define a craft winery, that's the number of cases. I was just wondering where we got that number.
And I, I got that number, just purely doing the math between cases and barrels. And a barrel that's defined in, barrel, barrels are actually the only thing that's defined in statute anywhere, it's thirty-one liquid gallons.
So if someone applied and said, oh, this is way off, we need to have fifty thousand cases.
We just deal with it when they come in.
Deal with it. As an amendment to this.
And it, and it wouldn't be, it wouldn't likely be an issue from the down zoning perspective, because one, there'd have to be another winery to have a non, a nonconformity issue. So if it's the first one, then they're not, then there's nobody nonconforming. And then the other part of it would be, is, it would be really weird for them to come in and ask for restrictions. And if they did, they're consenting to it, so it covers all the grounds for the down zoning provision.
Yeah, I think that was, my understanding with my conversation with James earlier, which is a lot above my head, but that, they pulled these numbers from the engineering manual that the plant, that the engineers who built the plant said the plant can handle. And the effluent numbers are not based on brewery or winery or pizza shop or whatever, this is, was it EDMs per?
There are, there are different places that the numbers came from. Some of them were from information that had been provided by the plant, the engineer that had done most of the plant work. Some of them were from the operating specs that were mathematically translated from the operating specs of the plant as it was designed. And then some of them also came from language in the NPDES.
These numbers would apply to anybody putting stuff into the plant. This is what the plant can handle. Unless you come in and make some design changes, which, which required engineer.
Say that it can handle something else.
But his operation manual says this is what it can handle.
Well, they're going to be under, so under, on page six of nine, line, you know, line four, section V there, that talks about the pretreatment, it's the most restrictive of the following. So, they got to meet that or beat that. They either got to meet or beat those numbers, as, as it currently is in the ordinance.
And, and I think we had a tour of the facility, and one of, thank the staff for that, was very helpful. It's my understanding the town can determine the source of a particular problem.
I think, in many circumstances, yes, and some circumstances, no, but there are way, if, the, the problem is harder to determine if it just happens once. But if it's consistent, then you sample on either side of, or you sample along the way at different places, and then you narrow it down, and then you sample on either side of, of where the effluent of something is coming in, and if it, if it isn't on the left and it is on the right, then it's coming out of the pipe that's in the middle. Am I right about that, Josh, essentially?
You have something else, Jamie? Uh, yeah, that was the question, is how would you enforce that? You said if there was, and wouldn't that apply to anybody? Anybody dumping something into the wastewater stream that person did?
Well, there's, there's requirements in chapter fifty of the town's code ordinances that relate to things like that, and I haven't, I, I looked at them, but I, I don't recall exactly where that is or what the, what the specific language is, but it applies generally to people putting bad things in the system. But in here, you would do this, you would treat it through the normal zoning processes. And part of this is requiring quarterly, monthly sampling and quarterly reports on some other things about how much effluent they're using and passing through the system and to keep.
So there was a.
And barrel, and the amount of barrels, I think, is quarterly as well.
So it'll be based on monthly sampling and not, oh, we got a violation, must be the wastewater.
Well, if Josh is at the plant and something blows up at the plant, and they start backtracking it, and they find there's a problem, then it would be, you know, then it would, it wouldn't be during the sampling time. But I think the most likely, you know, even the plant in general, they have some delay in, if it's a sampling related problem for the plant. If it's a problem where they can see it or smell it or know that it's happening, then, then, you know, then they can jump on it then, but if it's a sampling related problem, they've got some delay on their own, and so it's not uncommon to have some delay there.
Keep having trimming on the sampling. Keep monitoring, sort of, trimming to see if something is out of line.
All that's on page eight, though, the monthly reporting requirements and quarterly certification and update and the report sampling, and also inspection of the effluent.
And from a zoning perspective, zoning typically, you don't have a mechanism to make someone stop there immediately, but there is a somewhat rarely used provision in one sixty D and that's in your ordinance that this specifically points to, and on, on page eight, at line four, section G. So normally what you do if there's a zoning violation is you issue a notice of violation. It gives them a time to, to fix the violation, and then you may start civil penalty. We, we've had this discussion when we were talking about other items before, not too long ago. And so you would use that notice of violation mechanism, and they would have the ability then to, within thirty days, appeal to board of adjustment, and until you got past that and had the ability for a court essentially to, or they stopped appealing, either you got a court issuing order that they had to fix whatever the problem was, or they stopped appealing, they could continue problem, in most cases, continue violating the zoning ordinance. But the mechanism for a stop work order flip flops who has the problem. It makes them stop immediately, and they go to the board of adjustment to get it back, rather than you going to, rather than trying to keep you from taking it away. I've only, it's kind of a weird provision, really, stop work orders. I've seen them in building code violation stuff where people are actively constructing a home and they're doing it wrong, building inspector issues a stop work order until everything gets straight. I've, I've only seen them in a zoning context once, and it involved a whole lot of lawyers really quickly.
One other thing about the lighting issue here, it does mention lighting shall be kept to a lowest possible candle power, but they would have to abide by the dark sky ordinance provision, or we have elsewhere.
Yeah, I think that language is essentially from similar in other zoning district intent.
And the manual way of building would not apply because of part one of sixty, I think.
No, it would apply, it's not residential.
Okay, it would apply.
Anybody have anything else? I think if there are no further concerns, does somebody want to make a motion to approve this?
Yes.
Make a motion to recommend approval of text amendment to create Article nine, the first North Carolina brewery overlay district regulations.
Article eleven, Article eleven.
Is it eleven?
Not one.
I'm sorry, eleven.
With, with the addition, recommend that we add.
I made my motion to include.
To include at the end of article or paragraph, I think it's four A six, which would then read toxins and contaminants into the town's wastewater treatment system, comma, stormwater system or wetlands.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Now moved to consideration of the zoning map amendment ordinance to create the first north brewery, North Carolina brewery overlay district. Any discussion?
No, no way, no way, can't do that.
Ben, you explain the difference in what the first and second were?
The, the second one is the map amendment.
Okay.
And the first, and the first one is the text amendment for the regulations that imply in the district that you're creating, but a map amendment.
This just changes the zoning map.
Unless anyone wants to discuss, I'll go ahead and make a motion to, to recommend approval to the board commissioners.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We now move to a period of board member comments. Jamie?
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Bill?
Glad to see this, this discussion and process of.
Bob?
As well, I'm, I'm pleased to see this move forward to the commissioners.
Randy?
Echo the sentiments of my fellow board members.
Same here. No further comments, is there a motion to adjourn? So moved. Do I have a second?
I get.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?